Rise for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of us all. Sue, roll call.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeGore?
Here.
A motion to approve the consent agenda tonight as the water advisory minutes and the joint session.
I'll make that motion.
Of course.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGore?
Yes. Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda? Uh, 115 Riverside, Old Business, number eight.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Sue Council. Twenty days has passed since the resolution to move forward with, uh, um, the proposal by Greg Cantfield to sell further development for the, uh, um, for the line shack properties. Um, as you, as you know, his proposal is to extend from, extend the Main Street end to the site. He will need four votes in the affirmative to sell the property. Uh, if you have anything else at this point.
I'll make a motion to hold on to resolution thirty-one twenty-two. Is there any comment? Yeah.
You're making a motion to approve?
Yes. Yep.
I'll support.
Okay, any other discussion? Sue.
I believe there's a comment from White Power.
Oh, that's right, Daniel, sorry.
Stand here, fine.
You can come on. Sorry, Dan.
Oh, you're okay. Just wanted to thank you guys for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm here as representative of the board of Lowell Light and Power to clarify and define our recommendations regarding the current RFP. To start, we acknowledge and understand that the city council has additional considerations for the sale of this property. We're supportive of the decision-making process. That said, we would like to affirm our top recommendation of a sale under the current RFP process, moving the building off of the utility's insurance, both its cost and its actual liability is a high priority of the utility. Further, a timely sale would provide all involved an opportunity to focus on other business. Both the timeliness and the amount of funds expected to be received from the sale would directly impact our ability to provide an affordable rate to the communities we serve. Our secondary recommendation of moving the property to the highest bidder, we believe, would help the utility best accomplish those goals. And I want to say thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Any other public comment on any such agenda item? Motion in a second, Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Greg made a point of, uh, bringing up that he had hired someone with PPP money and that he had spread PPP money to businesses in Lowell, and I received both of those things. And since he was using that as an argument to support his case, I don't know how I could possibly vote on this thing.
So, it's always nice to know about alleged conflicts before they're, you know, we're at the meeting deciding, but, um, I wouldn't wanna think about whether that is an actual conflict and not try to quite understand how the money, the situation that you're describing.
Okay.
So, can you just give us a little bit more detail?
Sure.
Okay.
At the end of, we had a joint meeting with the board of those guys, and, um, at the end of the meeting, Greg gave us, um, probably a seven-minute speech as to why we should give the purchase to him. He cited that he had improved other buildings, and then he brought up the fact that when the PPP money hit his, um, business, he had hired someone to do some marketing, and that someone is me. And then he talked about giving away money in the matching funds, and my business got some of that. So, I figured if he's using that to support the fact that I should vote for him, I thought I better stay out of it.
Okay, so, what I'm gonna need to do is, um, look at the voting requirement, the bylaws, and see whether you recusing yourself then reduces the number of votes we need or not, okay? I'm gonna need a minute to do that. So, at this point, if you wanna table the remainder of this vote here, you wanna do that, and we can be, you know, I can try to have an answer for you by the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna?
Not table it, just let's just move it to the end of the agenda, go on with the rest of the agenda, and then hopefully I'll have an answer for you in a minute, and we can go back to it. Does that sound good?
No, but it sounds like what we'd have to do.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on for now, West Michigan Health Insurance Pool Resolution Thirty-three Twenty-two.
At our last city meeting, the city council approved for the city to move into the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool. We are beginning our onboarding process, and we need to approve the attached resolution, which is Thirty-three dash twenty-two. The resolution confirms we will participate in the plan for three years. Also, this will prove for me to be the trustee and for Sue Olm to be the alternate trustee to represent the city with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool Board. I recommend that Resolution Thirty-three dash twenty-two be approved as presented.
Any questions for Mike? Resolution Thirty-three Twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Thirty-three dash Twenty-two.
I'll support. Any further discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Uh, number C, Kent County Youth Fair Agreement.
Representatives from the Kent County Youth Fair are here tonight. They wanted to talk to you about possibly considering an extension to the lease after twenty-twenty-three, when the lease expires December thirty-first to twenty-twenty-three. Bill Zaski and Morgan Doyle are here tonight to discuss with you.
Good evening, I'm Bill Zaski with Kent County Youth Fair. Um, yeah, so our agreement with the, the city, um, is leasing the property up until December of twenty-twenty-three, and we wanted to have a discussion with the city council to see if there's any appetite to extend that one more year to twenty-twenty-four. We, we're, we're building new grounds as, as we speak right now out at Cascade Road at the Old Deer Run Place. We're planning to have the twenty-twenty-three fair at the new grounds next year, um, but we realize that it's, um, there's a lot of stuff that we need to move and coordinate with the city on, and so we're wondering if, if an extension of one more year would give us a little bit more of a smoother transition, um, as we transition out of our lease and then give it back to the city for that for, for your use.
Not more fairs on the grounds?
No, no.
I don't. Does it even need a contract?
You can just decide, you can, you know, you can, as a council, just decide that you would, you know, if you don't, when the lease expires, you don't have to extend it. That's totally up to you.
No, I mean, just moving stuff off the grounds doesn't need a lease, right? Do we just, they work with you, and they get their stuff out of there?
Yeah, that's part of the agrees now, is anything that they have on the site, we have to agree to, to move. That's already part of the lease.
Right, but I'm saying if we have fourteen months till it expires, we can't figure all the logistics out of fourteen months. And this has been a process now for half of a decade.
And you're saying in the current lease, it states that as of December thirty-first, they need to have their personal property?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three, they also need to have it out of the fairgrounds if they wish to take it.
Yeah, so we, we're supposed to figure out what's theirs, what's ours, in that period of time.
Fourteen months seems like a, it's not a area populated with a ton of buildings or properties. I don't know what it means. I don't know, I'm...
I don't see the sense of extending it past that. I mean, it's kinda like we're a safety blanket. I think we gotta be like, we gotta kick you out of the nest, right? And I don't mean it in a bad way. And I can say this, uh, if you come back and you have big issues in the twenty-twenty-four season, fair cannot happen. But I'm quite sure we can probably work something out. That's just my opinion, but to give you more time, no.
All right. That's the two of us, does anybody else have anything? Anybody want?
So, you're gonna be out for fair, you're gonna be, the fair's gonna be at the new location in?
Twenty-twenty-three, yep.
Twenty-twenty-three?
Yep.
Yeah, and how much would there be left to get?
We have nine buildings on site that will need to be taken down. That be moved and utilized elsewhere. We'll have probably some other areas that will have to, with the city on getting electricity lined, lined out, where all the water maps are, as well as, um, different structures on the facility, like we discussed, which ones are actually the cities, which ones are actually Kent County fairs.
I guess I'm gonna think fourteen months is plenty of time to figure that out.
Well, even longer if you think about it, because that project of your own's been going on for years. We've known it's coming forever and ever.
Well, I just mean that as far as?
Yeah.
If they're gonna be gone and for the fair next year, we certainly should be able to figure out whose building is what in fourteen months.
Mike, look at me, come on up.
Perry, nature reside of nine twenty-four Riverside, formerly, um, of the, on the parks. What they're, I don't have an issue with them, you know, the extending it, the timeframe to remove things and everything. The only issue that I've had, and we talked about it at, at the, um, coffee with council, is currently, if you're just extending their current, um, lease, um, we've had issues before, and maybe not with this group, but with others, that they had full control of everything down at the, that, not just the two weeks of fair, but if Pink Arrow wanted to have something down there, we had to get permission from them, anybody else. So, I think if you extend it, I think it should be rewritten for just the removal of the property and not to have the use of the fairgrounds from now until, till that, that time. So, I mean, I, I don't see it's a big deal to, to remove their equipment or to give them extension, but I, I do think that shouldn't be, that a new contract should be written, if you do decide to do that, taking out some of the current agreement struggles.
Thanks, Perry.
Well, how about if we just wait till like next September or something, if it's still an issue?
My concern though is still what Marty said, like it's a, we're to, our fairgrounds over here is just a catch-all for whatever happens up there. If it's not working, we just come back here. And then everybody on that board who we had a decent relationship with is gone now, so I don't even know. I don't...
I mean, is it an idea to say that moving things in the following winter would be difficult to do or to plan for, and maybe writing just an extension of, if they don't have a lease of the property, but the buildings and the removal, maybe an extension of three to four months to get them through the winter?
Maybe, but I say, the pre-laid extension, I would like to see the, what buildings are staying, what buildings are going, uh...
Like work up a third plan of?
If we had an inventory, what was ours and what was theirs? It would be easy to plan how long realistically you think it's gonna take. But an extension of this exact same contract, no, we can't, we've not had use of a city park now in however long, just because you gotta jump a second hurdle to get to the city park, so I don't wanna continue that anymore.
Bill, is that the only thing you were looking for to get extension, is the removal of the equipment, not actually run the fairgrounds, not?
Yeah, I mean, so it would, yeah, that's up for discussion, right? I mean, our biggest concern is, like I said, like, like Morgan said, is moving some of the equipment of the barns or something like that, right? We know that nothing happens fast in construction, so we're trying to, just, we're looking, we're trying to look forward, look ahead, but, you know, we, we certainly understand you guys' point of view, and it's your property, and, and all of that, we'll, you know, we'll work with you on how to make a transition as smooth as possible. This is just our, one of our ideas, is to help smooth out the transition, but that's, that's fine.
In my former life, I had a construction company, commercial, um, tearing buildings down and transferring, rebuilding them, is, in my opinion, a very costly thing, but apparently you've got lots of money, so...
That's not true.
Why can't, winter's here in almost right now, right? Old fall. Why can't we inventory those buildings in the months you can't do construction? And then by spring, you can say, they only have eight buildings, or they have nineteen buildings, here's how long it's gonna take. Why are we giving them a blanket extension of an agreement that denies us pretty much the majority of use of the city park, when we could just say, here's a key to the gate, you can come get your building, you know what I mean?
I, I don't know, we couldn't get a, some answer back in the two months of, of what's ours and what's theirs?
Right, right.
And does that look like to, to, to be up and come back and another discussion?
Yeah, 'cause there's a time frame per building to come down, right? And I'm pretty sure I could figure it out doing the square footage.
Maybe once sooner they'll find out that this building is just gonna be downloaded out even worse than academic efforts to move it, you don't know that yet.
That's the other thing, all those buildings have been through yearly floods, and two great floods and one Noah's flood, so I, you don't even know what the condition is really. Is there a motion at all to extend the Kent County Youth Fair Agreement?
Not as, as presented.
Consensus to save this agenda item for the spring now if you need it?
I would like what Jim said, if we could get an inventory done in the next eight weeks, by the first of the year, I mean, I don't think there's a rush on it, but if we don't ask it to get done, we'll...
Get up this year.
Yeah, so do we need?
Eight weeks should be more than enough, but I'm quite sure you, you folks know what you think is yours, and, yeah, I'm sure somewhere, Dan, we can do some, we probably have it in our research. Well, yeah, it's gonna take some research, I think, but I think we have a general...
I know Rich had some information for this years ago. There isn't a lot, there isn't a lot there on this.
There should be, didn't we do that for the, you and me and Jessica and Perry, I think?
Yeah.
It was on parks?
Yeah, that's on parks.
Isn't there a list with that contract somewhere?
How about the insurance company?
Yeah.
Or companies, wouldn't they have?
But at least, yeah, Mike has direction, he just has to get... Everybody good on that one?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Marty and or Mike, Joe, Martin, committee open?
Yeah, just a quick update, um, at the, uh, we had our first meeting on October seventeen with the township. We did, at the meeting, we took the direction that was given to us pertaining to this, and, um, basically what we told the township was that we recognize that there is a need to expand the facility mainly to, well, due to the growth of the township, and that the growth of the city does not cause any future expansion of the facility. And we told them at the time that we were, you know, we were interested in helping them in any way we could, um, with, um, with whatever grant funding that is out there. As a matter of fact, we've already applied our notices of intent to, um, for the drinking water revolving fund, um, for, uh, funding for a land expansion. We've done that, we've also done that for the wastewater plan as well, um, but we did tell them that if, if there wasn't be any expansion of the facility, the city ratepayer would not be involved, because the city ratepayer does not need the expansion to the facility. And we also told them at the time that if they do wish to seek other means to provide their water, we would release them from the agreement. And we did convers, you know, we did talk about that, um, really not much of a response, I don't think, from the township at that time. They did say they were gonna take it back to their, to their board and discuss it and come, get back to us, um, we're meeting Monday after Thanksgiving.
Yep.
And that's really where we're at right now.
Yeah, they wanted to put the waste treatment plan in with the deal, and I said, no. We will deal with them one?
That's right.
Project at a time. And the township is under the understanding that if they spend the money, our ratepayers are gonna benefit from it, which I can't quite figure that one out, but that was what was said, but it's gonna be, what'd you say, Dan, like five, almost six million dollars for that expansion? And it'll take, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, it's gonna be a three to five-year process to get all that taken care of for them too, so...
And one other thing, they did mention, uh, the possibility of an authority, and we did, I did convey to them that the council's not opposed to it, um, but it would be the representation would be based on some sort of usage to be determined.
Good, any questions for Mike or Marty?
Well, if, if it takes five to six years to expand, I, I was at the meeting, and I guess I, I must have missed that, but my point is that I, I know we were supposed to have that joint committee meeting for a long time. I, I hope there's some urgency, unless we're gonna have planned on doing sprinkling ban again next summer, 'cause the township has grown like a weed.
I, I pretty much planned that we will have a ban, we will have, we will have restrictions in place every summer until this is addressed.
Yeah, that meeting we did, remember, that was the first meeting since the creation of this, which was?
Nineteen eighty-seven?
Yes, so...
I'm sorry, ninety, ninety-two for the law?
Yeah, ninety-two. So, uh, we were gonna do quarterly, and we decided to do it every two months, just to keep it fresh, keep it...
Well, yeah, but I wasn't expecting anything to be solved at the first meeting.
Right.
But I guess I, like I said, I missed that it would take five years, I just thought, oh, we gotta expand the plant. Yeah, it's just, Dan can do it.
Surprise number two. You ready on those, Dan? All right, anything else on the block? All right, now you're up for real, Dan, Gator replacement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Currently, the city utilizes an old John Deere Gator utility vehicle in the cemetery and around the downtown area for maintenance activities. The crew that works at the cemetery is also a same crew that takes care of all the planters and everything in the downtown area, and that the welcome signs and around City Hall and the like. They utilize that unit to carry things in the back, and also utilize it a lot of the cemetery. Um, this, the unit they have was received years ago from a federal surplus, they received two at the time, and then, uh, they were in pretty poor shape, and they got it, but they, they fixed them up and got them so they work. But one of the units, about a year ago, started having all sorts of problems, so we kinda parked it, stole parts off it to fix the other one, 'cause the parts unavailable. And then this past year, when we had our equipment sale, that got sold, and we received eleven hundred sixty dollars for it, as is, and they came out, took a look at it, so you can't get mad at us. So, the cemetery and downtown crew utilizes the unit almost daily. Um, at the cemetery, the unit fits well between headstones and in the rows versus a dump truck. It works really good for, uh, buzzing around for excavations and such, it doesn't run up things as well, as much. And then the box itself, now we have to go back and backfill after funeral. For the cremations, one box full does the bare, it works really nice. And there's been a few times this past year, because of weekends or late nights, there's only one person that's working, and that one person can do it by himself, so we kinda like that unit up there for that. And then in the downtown, again, it fits in nicely wherever we're working, and it doesn't take up a lot of space, it's built to go down the road versus, uh, out in the woods or something, so it works well, it keeps interference with traffic to a minimum, fits on the sidewalk in most areas, and stays away from building overhangs and street plates. Again, this, this unit's in very poor shape. So, we contacted Greenmark Equipment LLC Hastings, they're the local John Deere dealer in the area, and they quoted us a cost of thirty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-eighteen cents for a new, uh, John Deere Gator. This pricing is through the state of Michigan MyDeal program. The unit has all the necessary safety equipment, mirrors, turn signals, headlights, work lights, et cetera, and, uh, it's, uh, it's something we're comfortable with. We also plan to utilize this new unit for winter maintenance. Currently, we use our Bobcat for some of that, but we have issues getting that around and, and the way it operates where this is a little different, a little easier to operate, so we're also planning to utilize it winter maintenance by also including a six-foot V-plop. This will be used to remove snow from sidewalks on city properties, downtown V-B, and help cleaning snow from around parked cars in the parking lots. A smaller unit, easier to get in there, 'cause we get a lot of cars that are parked, you can't, we don't dare put a plow truck between them, even a pickup plow. This is gonna be smaller, V-plop, it works a lot better. This also has hydraulic connectors on the front, in case we wanna add other attachments such as a blower, a blower or a broom, and it also will have, uh, additional connectors in the back to add salt sprayer that we're looking at purchasing separately. We looked at several other utility vehicles, and found only one that was similar to what the Gator is and what we need to perform our type of work activities. Many utility vehicles manufactured by outdoor companies are built for recreational-type purposes and are more like an over, or are more like an overbuilt golf cart. They're not as heavy-duty aversive for the additional attachments such as full-size adjustable snowplows or snow blowers, and they do not typically have the same safety fixtures we feel are necessary for working in the public in the downtown area. While many of these, you can get a small plop for them, they're small plops, they're not V-plows, they, they straight plops, and, and we're looking at something that's gonna last us and fit in where we need it to fit. Uh, like I said, the John Deere Gator is built more towards on-road vehicle standards with their heavy-duty suspension, different tires, but more mirrors and headlights and such. Our workers travel the streets through the downtown area, need to be able to do so safely. We did find one comparable exception, and that's the Bobcat Toolcat. This unit is on the same standard as the John Deere Gator, and with the Toolcat, you can get a lot more attachments, they got forty-five of them, they list that you can put on there, and some of them are pretty handy. I worked in a community that had one of these, and we rented chippers, or not chippers, stump grinders and other items, and little excavators for certain things that we need to get done. However, we don't feel that those are things that we need here in Lowell at this time. The Toolcat, like I said, has those more attachments. Toolcat's taller, it's longer, so we're a little concerned about where it could fit in, where we could have kind of some conflicts where we don't currently. It's also a lot more expensive. Well, I listed on here the, the MyDeal price starts out at fifty-nine thousand, uh, Friday they did finally get us a quote for comparables, and it starts out at sixty-two thousand, and then when you add the, uh, similar, similar items that we have with the John Deere, it gets itself up to over seventy thousand dollars. So, we did, we did check those. We have budgeted forty thousand in the current fiscal year, equipment fund for the purchase of the new Gator, and then we also, recent sales of equipment, we're running another seventy-seven hundred dollars plus to the equipment fund, and we still have some more items that didn't sell through that process that we still have to get up and sell. So, it'd be my recommendation to make this purchase.
Any questions for Dan?
Does it have an enclosed cabin?
Yes.
For employees?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I see our John Deere, that thing's gotta have a million miles on it, they're everywhere, up and down.
It's very handy for what they... It's very handy for what they do, or they build versus a pickup truck or something. They do use pickups and such, and the smaller dump truck for different things, but for a lot of their getting in and getting out along water, along the river, around the downtown area, and then again, with all the headstones, it is very handy for what we have to do.
Can we put a odometer on this one so we figure out how many miles have we put on it?
I think we'd be driving.
I'm hoping to approve the Gator purchase. I'll make that motion.
All support.
Any other discussion, questions for Dan? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Jessica.
Are we done involving all other business?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so Cliff, I don't think you truly have conflict of interest here. I was gonna say, and we can talk about this more if you want to, but a conflict of interest is a situation where in making your decision in your capacity as a government official, it's impacting your finances, your relatives or family, or your property value, for example, because of proximity to your property value. I guess I would point out that I believe you voted on the initial resolution, and so at this point, I guess I need to ask you if you think voting on this, or if your relationship or receiving this money from Greg has somehow impaired your ability to decide this public question objectively and independently?
Well, I felt like those remarks were directed specifically at me, and I was a no vote, so I walked away from it. I actually had a friend of mine that watched the video, and he said, God, Cliff, what was going on? You looked like you were at the dentist's office waiting to get a root canal. He was watching my face. That's why I thought, hey, I'm out of this then. If he's gonna remind me that he hired me and that my business benefited from his generosity up and down Main Street, I better not vote yes, because that kinda smelled funny to me. But if you don't see a conflict.
I, I really don't.
Okay.
So, and you also, you have a duty to vote, unless I can find you a conflict. Now, if you want, I know you don't wanna hear this, I can write a legal opinion and get deeper in the weeds, but I think that in smaller communities, we're all, you're all connected, and depending on how narrowly or broadly you wanna define conflict of interest, that would be a pretty broad definition of conflict of interest.
Okay.
So, now that being said, if you feel that you cannot vote impartially, then I can't force you to. You, you know, you can abstain. You can't, I can't force you to. But the charter makes it very clear that to dispose of property, this particular resolution requires four votes, and it's not a situation where if somebody has to abstain or recuse themselves, then the number shrinks and you only need three, it's a solid four. So we're stuck with the requirement of four, and I think it's a great area, but, you know, off the cuff, like I'm being asked to decide right now, I would lean toward it not looking like a conflict of interest, so.
Well, due to my uncomfortable list, I'm gonna abstain then.
Okay, you do what you need to do.
Okay.
Cliff, you wanna redo the whole vote?
Let's redo, let's redo the vote and see where we end up.
Alright, I had a motion in a second for resolution thirty-one twenty-two. There was no discussion, we will vote suit.
Councilmember Groves.
No.
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic abstained, and Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Alright, well, they can get four votes. Anybody wanna make a recommendation for the next proposal?
I would like to make the recommendation to accept Todd Shaw's bid in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars and see what happens.
All support. Any other discussion on that? Sue?
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
No.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Alright.
Can I explain my no vote?
You can.
Okay, 'cause I live across the street from a project that isn't done, why would we give them another one?
Did you, what did we figure out last time about the twenty days? We have to draft the resolution.
We can draft the resolution tomorrow. It would be the first meeting in December that we could take action on it. So that would be December fifth. If we draft it tomorrow, it would be more than twenty days.
Oh, we have, we're gonna, it's gonna be that December meeting, no matter.
No matter how you get around it.
Gets drafted, right? Because it's gonna be twenty days.
Yes.
Alright, anything else on that? For the permission reports, Leo. Marty.
Alright, go ahead, sweetie.
Jeff.
Um, I have a couple of meetings coming up. The big one tomorrow is with the Road Showboat Sixth Committee to discuss the purchase from the city of the showboat. So we talked about what was presented to us and talked about any potential changes. So just bringing it up to your attention, it's not official, but it is what we're.
Would you attempt to turn it into a riverboat casino?
No. No, it will not be a casino, at least, at least permanently. Not saying that there won't be a casino, like there's a fundraiser down in the road.
One of my southern laws is a Native American, if that could help with the casino plans.
It's not such a hard no now, is it?
And then I know on December seventh, I think it's, it was the first LCTV fund meeting, right Dennis? Yeah, so we're looking forward to giving away some money.
What'd you say, the seventh?
Seventh of December, I believe.
Five-thirty, right?
Five-thirty, yep.
And then when are?
Uh, sometime in February. We'll probably look at around the first of February to have all, every applicant's in by, and then we'll have our meeting before end of February, and bring it to sometime in March or so. So we're open for it.
Eleven.
Yeah.
The historical district committee has some money, but nobody's asking for it. But on the flip side, we have a Look Foundation this Thursday, and our docket is full.
Good. This fire authority was moved to, I think, the seventeenth, normally is, on the second Thursday, so I don't have anything here. Mike, the city manager report?
We'll start off with Dan's and update on G-drives.
Last week, Tuesday, we received, well, Monday, we received notice that M.D.A. finally approved the fine, the project contract. So Tuesday, we met with the contractor. Wednesday, we notified all the residents that they were gonna be starting by putting up barricades on Wednesday, and then Thursday, they, I think Thursday, they milled and did their cleanup. Today, they filled the cracks, and they started with the resurfacing. They have to put a little asphalt down, and there's a fabric to go on top of that tomorrow, and some other stuff to do. And then on Wednesday, they're planning to be here, start of the day, and paving that road, they said it'll take them about eight hours, start to finish, and the G-drive will be done. That's their plan, weather permitting, and we've been in very good weather at the moment, so. They're in a hurry, because they've got everybody calling them right now, saying, well, the weather's nice.
Yeah.
So we have them first.
Yes.
That's the one.
Smell this weekend.
Mary.
That's what they say.
I know.
We're, we're, just a quick update. BLDI did do a sample of the neighbor's property water east of the landfill. There was no perk found in the, in the, at the site, so that, or in the water table, so that's, that's good. They're still working with them on getting access to drill wells, and they'll let me know as they, as they move forward with that. I do have some good news. I'm glad to hear that Jason Diaz has been hired as a road patrol deputy for the Muskegon County Sheriff's Office. He's currently in their training program as we speak, and I just wanted to congratulate him with that. Also, thank you to New Union for getting your driveway paved. Appreciate it, it looks really good.
Looks great.
And I sent out a thank you, thank you for, thank them for doing that. The Moose property, we did get a report back regarding the, to see if any of the materials that we had detected previously had migrated into the groundwater into the Grand River. That did not happen, so the, the, the materials remained intact. We go back to court Wednesday for the nine-ninety North Washington property, and we'll have more information once, once that happens. And then obviously, tomorrow is the election. I know the city will be, I believe NBC News is gonna be featuring Lowell and Kent County throughout the day with the polls, so sure, a little more tomorrow, but that's all I have.
I have a question. Did BLDI, didn't we ask them for an estimate on what it would take to get the piles gone?
Yeah, about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but the due diligence, but we're, should be getting the due diligence reports, where the due diligence reports that BLDI do not believe that we need to do that.
Any other questions for Mike? Alright, no appointments, Councilwoman, Cliff.
Speaking of the DPW, I'd like to congratulate you on making that old Gator last as long as you did. And I appreciate the, the way you came in under budget, you do all your homework, and one more thing, the enthusiasm of the city staff is, I ran into a couple of them, put lights up on the Riverwalk on my way to work the other day, and they're more excited about lighting it up for Christmas than Santa Claus is.
We have, we have a great crew down there, works hard, they like the community. They're all from around here just about, and they all wanna make things look nicer, and that's one of the things that the guys have been gravitating more towards, is making what we have look even better. And so that's why you see, you know, wanna put the roofs on the buildings at the parks, they're spending a little more time on the football field and baseball fields, they're taking care of the parks a little bit more, trying hard to get ice in the wintertime at Roberts Park downtown, they're trying to get it just a little bit nicer all the time, because they're all proud of their community and like working here, and they're, they're a really good bunch of guys. I feel really happy I'm working with them.
Well, that reflects leadership.
When do we see that, Dave?
You want to try?
Twenty twenty-five.
We gotta make this one work.
Yeah, this has gotta get us through the winter. It's probably gonna be spring.
Just, just check out.
Speaking of vehicles, the police car. Chris, why don't you talk about that?
I've been emailing and calling Signature Ford, not getting any return phone calls. I finally told the guys that our cruiser we're replacing is gonna roll over a hundred grand, which was, they only happened once that I, since I've been here. I got emailed back saying that because of whatever shortage, because we're ordering a hybrid as a hiccup, that they had to reorder the cars of twenty-twenty-three now to twenty-twenty-two, and they said they were hoping to get us a comparable price for that car, so we have no idea when we will see a new police car. So we gotta get with Dan and figure out how he made that Gator last long.
I think I saw Jeff's coming out the bottom right from the glint.
Jeff Winston. Good. Marty.
Couple things. One, I'd like to thank Chief for the challenge coins. These things are pretty cool. I got one from the State Police. I've got, we got the aerospace one here a little while ago, so these things are pretty cool. Second of all, I would like to ask that, I think it'd be easier, we talked about it, Dan, about possibly making it no overnight parking on Main Street instead of two-hour. Our Main Street is full, businesses are doing well. I have people come in the store all the time, and they're like, oh, I, I gotta go because it says two-hour parking, and they're, they're rushing in and they're rushing out, so we're, we're starting to see a loss of dollars. I know we probably don't police that two-hour parking very much, but it's, the signs are still there. There are cars that park there overnight. I do know that you see a lot of them when I go to work and work, so we just made it with no overnight. That'd make life a little easier up and down. The second thing is.
Can we do, do that without asking heaven to help?
I believe you can, I just gotta check and look at our licenses to see if we ever make any modifications to your notice.
Our city parking lot back here apparently become a used car parking lot, that blue car sitting there with a sale sign on it, that's Elizabeth Baker's parking spot.
She didn't wanna say anything, so I said, I will.
But you didn't do retire about it?
Yeah. Actually, she said, well, then I'm outta here. And, yeah, I'd like to thank the DPW crew too. Them guys are, they're a lot of fun to be around. They're fun to watch, how they enjoy, literally enjoy what they do. I couldn't stand on that walk behind Moore down there, up and down between them stones all day long, and they do it, and they're happy about it, and I'm like, it takes a certain person, so that's it.
Okay, Leo.
Tomorrow is election day. Practice your right to vote.
Good luck to you. I'm gonna thank Bowles First Look, because they have religiously posted every letter to the editor that has come through this whole election season. And if you're paying attention, it's not a lot of fun up there. So I know that posting the article is not the hard part, the hard part is the moderation that comes after, and I think they just do a fantastic job of not only getting the word out about what's going on around here, but making sure that everybody has a voice with a smidge of creative control to make sure what you're reading is close. You guys do a really, really good job. Mean to me sometimes, but we.
That becomes someone.
Oh, yeah, it's just Amanda, probably.
I did have, one other thing, I did have a resident ask me if somebody was building a new home on the corner of Grindel and Jackson Street, because all the land was cleared, and I understand Mobile Power came in there and cut all that stuff out of there so you can get ready for the new Highline, that's gonna come in sometime in the near future.
Yes.
So thank you for cleaning that up, and causing some controversy in the neighborhood.
Keep it under your toes.
Yeah, keep me out of that.
Are you gonna be replacing the pole that gets wiped out by that little minivan? On that twenty-one right in front of the dealership?
We are looking to eliminate as much as possible overhead construction down Main Street if we're able to do without that pole. So we do not have plans to replace it. There needs to, there's still some telecom infrastructure at the base that needs to be cleaned up, but no, the plan is to clean it up, patch the concrete, call it good.
Okay. Eleven. Alright, I don't have anything other than that, Joe?
Make the motion adjourn at seven forty-nine.
All support.
Motion in a second to adjourn, a little paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose. We're in adjournment.